I'm ready. Thank you. I would like to welcome people in the audience and listeners to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session. It's being held in the Assembly Chambers. Today is Thursday, May 11, 2023. Work Sessions are informal meetings of the Assembly where Assembly members review the upcoming regular meeting agenda packet and seek to receive information from staff. Although additional items not listed on the work session agenda are discussed when introduced by the Mayor, Assembly, or staff, no formal action is taken at work sessions, and items that require formal Assembly action are placed on regular Assembly meeting agenda. The first order of business tonight is citizen comments. Citizens can call 1-907-486-3231 or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. Again, those numbers are 1-907-486-3231 or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. All speakers are limited to three minutes. Speakers should sign in and state their name for the record if they're here in person. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any Assembly member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening device to prevent feedback. Are there any audience comments tonight, online or in person?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I would just like to apologize.
Carlene, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Carlene McChesney. I'd like to apologize because I didn't know the rules. So I have two books in my bag. I've been trying to study them. But from reading the books, you are going by Mason's rules. I take it. Because, so I just wanted to apologize. I didn't know the rules, or I don't even know when to comment and when not to. But I'd like to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlene. And frankly, you have nothing to apologize for, and we appreciate you attending and using your opportunity for public comment. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name's Carl Hertz. I'm the Administrator at Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center, and I've prepared a few remarks. I want to begin by thanking the Assembly Body for creation of the KIB Healthcare Facilities Advisory Board. We've met several times now, and I feel like the elected members are gaining a better understanding of the operational challenges we face each day operating the hospital. So thank you very much for that. Healthcare is one of the most heavily regulated and scrutinized industries in the United States, and our accrediting body, the Joint Commission, on behalf of the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, do not accept excuses when we fail to meet regulatory standards. They have the power to revoke our accreditation and essentially close our hospital. Several weeks ago, our hospital was surveyed by the Joint Commission. The surveyors spent three days in Kodiak assessing both our clinical operations as well as our physical plant operations. The newest section of the hospital is quickly approaching its third decade on Kodiak, and with it, so are many of the original building components. Some of those components have failed, are no longer supported, or are quickly approaching the end of their useful lives. Regulations have changed over time, requiring updates or modifications to the facilities, and because we sometimes have to move faster than the traditional borough business allows, Providence has invested millions in Kodiak's hospital, an asset we do not own. A similar scenario is unfolding again, this time with fire smoke dampers. Your building has hundreds of these mechanical dampeners throughout the facility, and during the 2019 Joint Commission's survey, numerous dampeners were identified as failed, and we were issued a time-limited waiver to correct the matter. For whatever reason, including a couple of years of COVID, the issue was not addressed, and they were identified again during our 2023 survey. We have 45 days to correct the issue, and because we could not wait, Providence authorized the contractor to purchase the materials, and then began working in your hospital yesterday. My ask of the Assembly is to reimburse Providence through the use of the repair or replace funds for these investments, and to establish a different methodology for approving hospital capital requests in the future, outside of the traditional procurement rules. The R&amp;R account is not funded through tax dollars, but instead funded through our lease payments to the borough. Thanks again for creating the KIB Healthcare Facilities Advisory Board, and for your vision of improving our hospital for Kodiak. I appreciate all the hard work Dave and his team have put towards improving the facility, and I look forward to working with Amy in the future. Thanks again for your consideration and your service to our community.
So I have no asks tonight. I want to thank all the residents that came out on Saturday and helped clean up. There's a whole lot more. Just because there's no yellow bags available, if it's a nice day, if it's a crappy day, grab a garbage bag, go pick up. It makes our town look so much better. It's better for the wildlife, and a walk with a bag of trash isn't a bad thing to do. Thank you.
Any other public comments online or in person? We'll give a few minutes for people to think about it and call in if they want to. All right, we're going to close the public comment period and go to the first item on our agenda for our work session, and that is the FY24 Budget Discussion. I know that we received a copy of the manager's budget to review, and we've had some preliminary discussions, and there are some issues that probably still need to be discussed, and perhaps some have to wait until we have more information from the state. For instance, the school district budget, we put a placeholder in there. We were going to talk more of that later. At some point, that needs to be discussed with regard to their request. So most of you have had time to review, and before we start the discussion, I do want to appreciate Dave Conrad for all the work that he did. I know it was really hard to try to put together a budget when you're interim managing, and so I appreciate that. So it's a little different process this year. So this is your time to comment or suggest changes, or to validate what has been turned in. I think we're sort of at the point, sort of like that gadget they have at the airport, where you put a coin in, and it spins really slowly at first, and as it starts going toward the middle, it goes really fast. We're reaching that real fast stage in our budget. I was wondering if our new managers could lay out the timeline for the formal budget approval, just for the audience, then we can start our discussion.
Sure thing. So as you know, we have a special meeting on May 25 to make the decision for the school board fund, or the school funding for the district, and then our deadline for the latest we can have it is June 10. I did see some hopeful emails from finance today, hoping that we had it done by the first, but our deadline is the 10th.
All right, great. Thank you. So it's an open floor at this point in time. Who would like to share their thoughts on the budget? A lot of papershuffling going on here.
I'll start.
Jared?
Thank you. So I'm kind of, I guess, jumping a little ahead to the manager's notes that we see that the assessed values were certified yesterday, and the assessed value is just a little shy of 1.6. That's a lot of commas, 1.6 billion. So what does that, now that we have that number, does that change what we've been, in what ways can we expect to see that changed on here? I don't see DORA, but it's hard to, I guess, talk about that without knowing how that translates to this with math numbers.
James is probably your expert on that Excel, how that number will fit into that Excel spreadsheet, because I know how much he loves Excel.
James?
It doesn't change what we're allowed to send out for mill rate for general fund and school. What it does change is what funds we can, what mill rate we can add for bond debt, and that's not the only thing that can, can change. So when you're looking at the, the whole spreadsheet, really, the only thing that you can do is, if there's anything in the bond debt portion of it that comes from general fund or facilities, you can take that out and put it in, into general fund, but you can't, you can't go over that. I don't have it right in front of me, the, the page that you're talking about, but I believe it's 9.09 or 9.07 mill rate this year, is, is what I remember DORA saying. And I may be wrong on that particular number. Don't, don't quote me. We'll have to wait until DORA shows us that correct number. But even with the assessed value going up, you can't go over that particular mill rate, no matter what that, the assessment is. So at this point, if you look at it, the way that it was presented, even with the 800 and some change difference in assessment, it's, it's not going to change a whole heck of a lot on the, on the mill rate dollars for nine point, whatever it is, 9.00 to 9.7, 07, excuse me, allowable. So you're still tied to that, to that mill rate. So as, as it stands as a whole, the only thing that you could really look at changing is if you go to, I think, 300.
Yeah, 300.
Then, then you have, you have the ability to change that if there's anything coming out of general fund, to take that out of general fund and keep some sort of mill rate, depending on where we want to go with the mill rate, whether it's 10, 10.25, 10.5, 10.75, like it has been for a few years. But that's the only place you're going to be able to put that 1.75 is into bond debt. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Mr. Turner, do you have anything else to share on the budget?
So this, this is kind of what the number that I was waiting for. I'm going to have to do some figuring on my spreadsheet, and then I'll try and have it turned in by next week. But as far as the manager's budget, I only have one or two things that I'd like to see changed. But as, as a whole, I think it's probably the best budget I've seen in a long time. So it's, it's, for my wants, not, not as a budget as a whole. The budgets have always been good. It's just I, sometimes I like to tweak them a little bit. But I think, I think, I don't, I don't really have any questions until I put the numbers on, into the spreadsheet that I have, and then I'll disseminate it to the, to the clerks and to finance, and the manager.
Right. Well, I certainly agree that the structure of the budget is very well done, and I don't have any concerns. I guess one area, though, that I'd like to discuss at some point in time before we finalize it, is what I believe is a new position or a necessary position, and that would be a resource development specialist. More than anything, I've heard from the public is, we need land available. The borough owns land. We haven't had a land sale in a couple of years, and it was very small. And it takes a long time to release land. It's a difficult, long process. When I was on, Seema's here, so I may turn to ask her a question at some point in time. But when I was on the lands committee last time, they said it would take at least a year from a desire to sell a piece of land when you actually can sell it. And there are a lot of steps in the process, and I think a lot of it falls on, I don't know who is responsible for distributing land at this point in time. I suspect it's just spread out among people that are already very busy. Thank you, Seema.
So unfortunately, DORA isn't here, and she is the know-all about the foreclosures. But I don't think it's one year. I think it's 10 years. I believe that we have to own the property for 10 years before we can, quote unquote, "sell" it. If we did something within a year of foreclosure, if the property sold for $140,000, but they only had $10,000 in debt, we'd have to give the $130 back to the person. And we're really not in the real estate business, so we are not marketing properties that we can't really sell yet.
Mostly, I was speaking about undeveloped property. For instance, I mean, I don't want to scare people by throwing out pieces of land, but there are a number of chunks of land that the borough owns that they could develop if they wanted to. And the desire to sell a chunk of land, that's where I'm told it would take at least a year to go through all the processes that, you know, the timelines, et cetera, the notice, et cetera.
True. I mean, it would have to go out to everybody, you know, it'd be kind of like that leased property that we're still trying to deal with. We'd have to make sure that there was no deed restrictions. We'd have to make sure that it was available. I mean, I don't think that the borough wants to be the one that actually develops, because we don't have surveyors, we don't have that kind of stuff on hand that can do it for us. So it would have to be something that was sold as a large parcel for a developer to take over. And then they would have to spend the money to come in and have it platted and stuff, too.
In the past, and I hate saying it that way, some of the money to support the individual who was responsible for developing land went to pay for the position. So it was sort of a self-funding program, and we're in the position where the public wants land, we have it, and I'm not talking about foreclosed property, I'm talking about land, that could be developed, and not only would it start producing taxes, if you will, but it would alleviate possibly the housing shortage. Now, some of the biggest subdivisions in Kodiak were not developed by the borough. They were sold to developers who then did all the works. The whole area along Sully Lane was all developed by Len Grothey, who used to, I don't know, Dave Conrad may have more information on going back, but I know Len developed the Sully Lane area, then sold all the lots, put in the water sewer and utilities, and that's happened. But this is complicated, and it's not something that we can, if we're really serious about distributing land and trying to alleviate the housing shortage, then we have to make land available. I know that there are a lot of lots available that are not being developed, that are held by people, some with a lot of property, and some just family-owned lots that they don't sell. But if they were going to sell them, they would have. And if you try to buy a piece of property, develop land, you can't do it. My, the bottom line is this. It seems to me that if we had a resource development specialist that could do leases, that could work on grants that generate money, that the whole position could be funded, and we could serve the public in a better way by, you know, making land available for young people to build homes and houses, and to do some of the things that we've all done when land was more readily available. And the only way we're really going to do that is to find somebody that that's their job to do within the borough, that can bring all of these factors into play. And for instance, if we were working with the Coast Guard to try to find land, that would be the lead person to help make that happen. And I believe that, given the fact that we haven't released a lot of land that we have, or that we haven't developed policies to deliver it to developers, saying that if you bid on this chunk of land, then here are the parameters and timelines that you have to develop it and release it. So I think the only way we can do that is to take the risk and put this position in the budget, and set them free to find land for the public. And I guess I want to look at our new manager and sort of give you a chance to, you're sort of short in the position, but what is your take on what I'm suggesting?
Day nine. Thanks for the opportunity, Larry. So some of the things that I've started to look at are our list of leases and where they're housed, and I'm amazed that over the years, they've kind of been dispersed to different departments. Most of our leases are very long, like 55-year leases, and they're up to date. But a lot of them are not, and they are either coming due very soon, or they are past due. Our lease with the city even for this old, for this building, it hasn't been signed since 2020. So luckily, those things kind of revert to a month-to-month, so we're not out of a lease, but they just haven't been updated. And so in that respect, we could definitely use some help in taking care of that. One of the other questions that I have gotten is having a contract specialist, like when people are signing contracts, they're not experts on going in and reading all the fine details. And I think, for those of you that have been on the Assembly since I came on in 2020, if you reflect back to that aerial imaging contract and all the fine details that were in there about where the information stayed and who owned the information, if we stopped using them, that information, like that, we, we asked questions about that. Those were really hard to answer, and so we didn't have someone who was like up to date and digging in in those contracts. So I think there's room there, and always for grants. Not only can we write grants for ourselves, but I think being able to assist our village communities with grants would be a great resource as well.
So given what I've shared and what the manager's shared, is there any thought that we should perhaps investigate this this year for the budget, or just let it go? Mr. Smith?
I guess the investigation in my mind would be what, what's the price that we're looking at, and the cost associated with staffing that position. I know we've talked about looking for a liaison to kind of go between the borough and our, some of our bigger leases with Providence or with the Fisheries Building as well. So I'm assuming that would be encompassed in this position as well. So I, you know, in order to make a decision on it, I think we need to look at what the cost associated with it would be.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Joe?
I think it is a good idea to look into this. It's hard to find a place to stay. I know it's been brought up about the number of homes that are for sale. I looked today, and I think I only saw two still. It's hard for somebody like me. I'm almost being priced out. What I'd like to do is get a home that I can live in, and I'm renting right now, and that's just, it's a horrible thing with the competition for the places that are available. So I think getting homes would be a good idea. We have a lot of people moving out of the villages, and they don't want to leave the island, so Kodiak is a good place for them to go. But with the prices of land and apartments, it makes it kind of harsh. So I think having some more places for people to move into, with all of the competition there are. I looked into renting a home, and there was a list of people that wanted to get the same place. I mean, there's only a few, few places that are open, and I think if we can get more of those available to people, it will help with the tax base. It'll help the borough as a whole, and it'll help keep people here. Because certainly, I would hate to move from Kodiak. This is my home, and I don't want to go. I don't want to leave. I already left my home village. I don't want to leave the island completely. And so I think there are probably many more people that feel that way. And so if we can give them more opportunity to stay, I think that will be best for us all. So I'm in favor of at least looking into this.
Jared, do you have any comments on it, one way or the other?
So what we're describing here, which I'm, I'm in favor of, to, to what extent are these job duties that we're describing fall under the purview of like the Community Development Director, not Seema, who's doing both? But if we were to hire, what is like the general job description of the Community Development Director? And would some of these elements fall into that?
We're going to have Seema come up and describe that Community Development Director job. But the office directly across from my office is indeed labeled the Resource Manager. So this is a position that has existed in the past. We can provide a job description for this, so you guys can see what that person used to be in charge of. Seema, do you want to ask the question about community development?
No.
Okay.
Community development would not be. I mean, they have their hands full with LAPC, Parks and Rec, Planning and Zoning Commission, where all of the permits that need to be processed and stuff like that. Having leases on top of it would...
So this is separate, almost like a, so separate, Department of one?
Well, under the manager.
A resource manager. Oh, okay, thank you. Well, then, how, I would, maybe this is not a DORA question. I have to go back and look at last year's, you know, budgeted staff position spreadsheet. You know, if we are running an average of eight vacant positions a year, then I imagine we'd be able to find a resource manager in there somewhere. Thank you, Larry.
All right. So sort of what I'm hearing here is enough information for the manager to come back and describe what Mr. Smith suggested, the job description and the costs associated with it, and any changes in the job description from the past that you would recommend for a resource manager?
We are on it.
Thank you. So we have consensus of that. Mr. Smith?
I don't know that we need to spend a whole lot of time on a job description unless there's one already written, as much as maybe what that would entail. Because depending on the price is going to make a lot of decisions for us as we're looking at the budget. So I guess I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time on that.
That makes sense. I also appreciated Jared's comment about, you know, it's, there's risk-taking in this position, but when you have a number of open positions that you haven't filled, and given the history of finding people to fill those positions, and hopefully, if this position is successful, it will generate money to pay for itself. So it's almost seed money to see how it works. But I do think it's an important position, and I do believe that if we could start releasing some of the borough-owned land for development, and it would actually be developed, it would be a boon to our community in many, many ways. So I guess we're ready to go to the next item on the agenda, which is ordinance number FY2023.
I think we had some more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, definitely. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I guess the question I have, and I can't find any other examples at the moment, but when I look at Section 220, Building and Grounds, and I look at the school district, and in 23, their rent payments, I believe that's what I'm looking at here, were $146,000. And right now, we're budgeting that. And right now, we're budgeting that at $194,000. So I'm wondering if rents went up in general within departments? If that's a global picture to all departments? Or if there was an increase of administrative office space being utilized by the school district?
Yes, all of the above. So rates have to fluctuate with your inflation, and look at what fuel did. So all of those rents have to be reflected. They have to be able to cover the costs. So everything you just said, yes.
So I can follow that, but I, I mean, and just using the school district as an example, they pay their fuel and their electric, right? That's not something that the borough is providing, is it?
I, no, it is not. We do, the reason that those spaces are rented is because it's noneducational space.
Right.
And if this is a carryover from the past, then so be it. It's a carryover from the past. But it's been in the budget in the entire time that I've been involved with this.
Right.
There's just, every department pays, and the noneducational space is also one of those areas that paid. Just like when the school district occupied this building, you paid rent in this building.
And I follow that, and I know that, and I've seen that over the years. I guess I'm just trying to comprehend the $48,000 increase. If, if, so I guess what I'm hearing, though, for that entity, it would be just a general inflationary increase. It's not necessarily tied to the consumption of fuel or electricity.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, can I assume then that the same increase, if I looked at the borough building, would be passed into every department? Because the way you set up your budget, everybody pays rent, if you will.
Yes, the EF budget went up significantly. We also picked up a room. SEMA lost a room. So we kind of trade spaces, but we pay proportionally for the space we occupy.
Thank you. Other budget comments? Mr. Smith?
Well, just one other comment that I just think we need to keep in mind is that we're in the middle of negotiations with our employee group. And so that's going to have an impact to the budget as well. So I just am thinking of those items as well at this point.
Well, I also think we need to keep in mind revenue sharing. We know the governor proposed full funding, but often that changes depending on the end of the session. And so there's a lot of unknowns in the budget. The amount of money that the school district will be getting in the base student allocation, it looks like it's started, you know, it's coalescing around $600,000 one-time money, depending on what the House and Senate do, which is good news. But it doesn't mean the district is directly getting that extra revenue, because some of it will go out to settle employee contracts, as I understand it. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. So there's unknowns in the revenue too. So we'll be following it closely as we go along, and hopefully, the legislature will meet their, they'll close out without a special session, but who knows? All righty. So if everybody's understanding the budget, we'll be back at this again. Next, we're going to look at, again, ordinance number FY 2318, Amending Kodak Island Borough Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.20, General Penalty Section 1.20.050, Fine Scheduling Setting Out Penalties in the Minor Offense Fine Schedule. An amending Title 18, Health and Safety, Chapter 820, Littering Section 8.20.010, Unlawful Acts Regarding Littering and Improper Disposal of Waste. And having said the above, it doesn't really make a lot of sense unless you have the actual ordinance in front of you. And you can look that up on the borough website and translate what I just said, and we'll go from there. SEMA, thank you for coming forward and sharing what all this means.
Absolutely. I am actually going to turn the podium over to James, who's going to talk all about it, because this is his field.
Thank you. James, if you don't know me. Good evening, Assembly. Community Development approached you last on April 27th, presenting ordinance alterations to broaden the scope with the intention of making a more enhanced and efficient enforcement process. We were tasked specifically to revise lines 62 and line 92 of the first version. I believe it was Scott that wanted us to revise it. So we're also presenting the amended version, number two. After editing it and sending it back to the attorney and talking with the borough attorney, he highlighted some concerns. I had some concerns also. Basically, the underlying concern would be whether there is a due process issue withholding an owner responsible for conduct of a third party, where they have no knowledge that the third party is using their property. The innocent owner defense part of the theory is that they identify who was driving, and we use their testimony to prosecute that person. The availability of the affirmative defense or one that must prove makes this a violation, which has the intent element, because they unknowingly allowed someone to use their vehicle. Removing that option basically makes it a more strict liability offense, which has a higher bar to clear for due process. If it is a strict liability without a knowledge or intent, it has a different level of due process. Offenses which are public welfare-type offenses may be strict liability offenses, but if it's not public welfare offenses, then some sort of intent element must be present. A violation which has no potential imprisonment penalty or relatively low fine, low fine, and no great public stigma can also be considered a strict liability offense. If we implement that code change in version two, we recommend that we use care to exercise prosecution discretion, discretion, and not prosecute the owner if they respond with a credible defense. And that's all.
So what I've heard you say is there was a proposal by one of the assembly members that the owner of the car would be held accountable for anything that happened in that car, regardless of who was driving, that instead of penalizing the driver, it would be the owner of the vehicle?
Correct. So we're trying to make it so it just goes to the owner of the vehicle, because eventually, I have to fill out an Alaskan Citation Form, and I have to check a box that has probable cause. Without the license plate and me just having a license plate and not having this ordinance in there, I basically just have reasonable suspicion, which is just a hunch, which doesn't hold up in probable, which doesn't hold up in court. It's, it's almost a violation of an amendment. With just the license plate itself, I have probable cause because I have a picture of the license plate, and I don't need to track down the person themselves. Scott wanted us to revise so that the individual doesn't have an excuse if there's littering coming from that vehicle. It's almost a little bit more redundant, because I still have to check the box that there's probable cause. And I'm not just going to issue that to anybody, because I have ethical boundaries myself. I don't want to just slap fines everywhere. So we thought it best to give you both versions. Consider what I shared, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the assembly? Jared?
Just a comment. You can tell, you can tell which one was written by a lawyer or was heavily informed by legal opinion. I would recommend that, I think I'm fine with the language, but it's dense that we should put together a, do some kind of public information, you know, let's boil it down, do some PSAs on the radio, like, here are the new rules, don't use your car, or, you know, get something, something that's more readable. But, yeah, thanks for, thanks for working on this.
Yeah, absolutely. We also made the, well, actually, there's different ways you can enforce when you issue a citation. You have an optional court appearance or a mandatory court appearance when you issue a citation to somebody. We went the optional court appearance route, because if we did the mandatory court appearance, I'd probably spend the majority of my day in court. So we went with the optional court appearance. If someone wanted to contest it, they have that opportunity to.
Okay. Any other comments? I agree with Jared's comment. This is, these are some new stiff penalties for littering, for some of the things that are causing stress to people in our community. But I certainly would like people to be aware of them, because if I just read what I just read, nobody will understand what we're talking about. So it'd be really nice to have something in the newspaper or something, you know, some kind of a way to reach the public. And I'll say upfront that social media doesn't hit as many people as you think. I learned that many years ago, that it's a vehicle, but I think sometimes it only hits about 10 to 15% when we think it hits a lot more. So radio, newspaper, that kind of thing.
So we do advertise the ordinances that go before a public hearing. They get advertised in the newspaper, and then we also do post them on Facebook. And on the radio, they, every week, we have ads that go out. So we're executing all the streams that we could possibly, I don't know how else we would get that information out there, aside from everything that we're already doing.
Well, we might want to ask maybe KIMX steer, the Kodak mayor, to do an interview for a newspaper article. I know you guys like doing that. And just to try different methods so that people become aware of it besides the norm.
Yeah, I think the issue is not with, yeah, they're definitely publicized, but it's the plain language concept that I think we should do. And they're, you know, we, like SWAB does some really cool PSAs, you know, on the radio. It's more like it's a story telling people not to dump your refrigerator, you know, off the side of the road. And we might, I think we might need to do something similar with this.
So my question would be, which one would you like us to go forward with, version one or version two? And, you know, we've got to now put this on for, you know, to go forward and schedule it. So Amy would be scheduling it with agenda setting and stuff. We also want to say that included in this, we need to think about putting those cameras up at Dark Lake and doing different things, because that's going to be important. And with this new version, it is something that we would be able to do. And then finally, we would like to know if we are still going to be complaint-driven or if these are things that we can, you know, just go and say, okay, we know these things were happening, and do we get to go out and enforce? So those are all things that you guys need to think about, too.
Just to be clear, the second version is the, includes the revision recommended by our attorney.
So both, both were recommended by the attorney. The version one was his first deal, and version two has the cautionary, that where he's saying, you know, we have to use a little bit more caution, and it'll be harder.
What's the consensus of the assembly? Mr. Turner?
So I like version two, which is the last, what, four sheets, six sheets of the packet. The only thing that I see is in your, in your boxes here, it says, it says mandatory court appearance. And I believe that I heard you say something different.
So are you speaking specifically of where it says KIBC 6.04 or?
Those belong to an animal control officer. I don't enforce those codes.
No, no, no. What I'm looking at is right above on page four of six, just above Section 3 on line 35 and 34, it says KIBC 17.155, 65.050, improper use of a recreational vehicle as a dwelling unit is a mandatory court appearance.
Yeah, I believe that was the only one. I think Scott put that in there just to leave it up to, for you guys to decide, because that one takes a little bit more articulation. Like, I guess that's what his reason was for that one, but everything else I recommend that we do optional. Okay, thank you.
Joe? Mr. Smith? Jared?
Yeah, second one, too. In line 52, there's an extraneous in. A vehicle may not be in used in the commission. Sorry. Prepositions.
All right, I believe the consensus is for version two. And I want to express our appreciation as an assembly for the work that you're doing on this, both SEMA and you. And thank you very much. I think anything that we could do to clean up our roads without having to get up and pick it up, as Dave Conrad said, would be better.
Yes, sir.
All righty, now we're going to go to the packet review. And the first consideration is contract number FY 2019, 10S, change order number 19 for the Providence Kodak Island Medical Center and Kodiak Community Health Center Space Analysis and Planning to Jensen, Yorba, and Wau Incorporated.
Thanks, Dave is here to tell us all about that.
Dave looks so much more relaxed lately.
Filter. Good evening and thank you. We have talked about this several times. We've gone through it extensively with our health committee. The beauty of the discussion tonight that I get to bring is that 260,000 were guaranteed already from the state through the Department of Health. We, Megan and I had applied for a grant, and we've had substantive, subsequent, excuse me, conversations with these folks. And we believe the remaining 30,000 or so should be picked up by them, because there was not application for that total amount. So here, we get our grant, we get our study funded. And to the best of my knowledge, all of the participants, the question that Mr. Arnt had for me the last time I spoke with this was, what is the community involvement? They're planning to actually have a week of interviews, that they're going to speak to all flavors of medical care providers, not just Providence, not just, you know, we're going to go and we're going to look out, even the small, single providers that are here in the community, because it has to be inclusive, or we don't have a good plan. So I would certainly urge you, after we went out and got the 260 grand towards this, that even if we have to spend the additional funds out of that specific enterprise fund, I think this is a, we're at a critical point of making decisions, what we're going to do with our healthcare facilities, and are we going to keep them in town? Or are we going to let this stuff go to waste and have larger costs by having to transport people off this island to have proper medical care?
Any comments? Mr. Turner?
That was, that answers all my questions. That's what I was going to ask about as well. So, thank you.
Any other, I see you're head nodding, so. I want to say thank you for the work that you did on this. This is a grant that you identified, and you and Ms. Christensen went far and generated the money. And what I really like about this is instead of setting up your approving contracts, we're approving one that looks into the future. And it's really timely, because before these changes can be made, we have to plan and think toward the future. And that's really exciting as an assembly member, is to really taking an active step to do something that will help the community five years, 10 years down the road. Thank you. Okay, and next, we go to our packet review. Contract number FY 2022-29, change order number five, authorization for approval for the Leachate Treatment Plant Pretreatment Facility project with Dawson Construction LLC. And I see Dave Conrad is still close to the front, so, Amy?
Dave, if you would please. While Dave is getting ready, I will say today that it stopped raining, and so... While Dave is getting ready, I will say today that it stopped raining, and so Dave took me in one of our brand-new pickup trucks out there, parked out front, and we want to drive out to the landfill. And I was able to see what all of these projects were doing, and how they were affecting the future operations of the landfill. And Brecken is out there making gravel, and I have never been so impressed in watching big rocks become little rocks as I was today. That is a really neat process, and it looked fun. So, if, I know that we've talked about in the past with assembly members, if you haven't been out there on a tour, it's a, it's a pretty impressive operation out there. So, as the weather starts clearing up, it'd be great if we got more assembly members out there.
Thank you for the fill. I've discovered that I didn't bring the proper paperwork, so I'm going to wing it here. Effectively, what this is, is we are required to, the process equipment that is being installed for the pretreatment of the Litchate, coming out of the Litchate Lagoon, is going to go through a process where it goes through a couple of tanks and aeration. And in order to be able to interrupt that and not put that particular product, if we have to divert it from our intake screens into the Litchate plant, we need to be able to divert that back to a, some type of a sump area. Well, the Litchate Lagoon is the obvious place to do that. So consequently, this change order effectively is required because of the proximity of the return line to the facility foundation. The contractor will have to dig almost 18 or 19 feet deep in between the foundation wall and the electrical lines that supply the plant. So, there's a large cost of rent for confined space trench boxes, which are not available here locally, the size and configuration necessary. So consequently, that's the largest expense, but we need to tie back into the line. And we believe that this is the most efficient way to do this and the most cost-effective.
Thank you, Dave. Comments? On we go. Don't run away, Dave. Contract number FY 2023-45, authorizing the manager to execute fire and smoke damper repairs at the Providence Kodak Island Medical Center with Remedia DBA Fire Door Solutions.
Thank you again. This, this particular request to the assembly is what Mr. Hertz was referring to earlier. These smoke dampers, what we have discovered, and I think you know this already, but we've identified them as well over at KFRC. But effectively, what smoke dampers do is they're connected to the, they're within the HVAC system, either on mostly supply, sometimes return air. If there is a fire, their function is, with the fire alarm system, depending on which alarms trigger, and where that signal goes, these various smoke dampers close, so that smoke cannot be transmitted from one occupied space to another. So, if you're on the first floor, you have a fire on the first floor of the hospital, and somehow that is tied into a second-floor discharge, you're not sending that smoke to another space, threatening other habitable areas within. It allows for, it, it eliminates or helps to prevent the transmission of smoke and, and also potentially embers. But it also allows extra, extra time for the occupants to escape the area safely. So those are effectively what's going on. The other thing we learned is that NFPA regulations require this to occur every six years. We have never done it at the hospital. We have never done it at KFRC. And oh, by the way, I had the same conversation with representatives from the school district today. So, this will not be the last time you hear about this.
Any comments? Mr. Turner?
I see that there's an additional $55 per dampener testing. Is that for the ones that are not replacing, or for the ones that they are replacing?
The ones that they are replacing are there. These things like, the prints at the hospital are less than perfect. When you get into some of these hidey holes, chances are good you might find one or two more. So, I believe that that is there. The other thing is that when they cut the access holes to do the inspections and they do the test, if that thing fails because of an electrical issue, and you have to bring the electrician or the fire alarm person in, that would stimulate an additional test.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, my, my only comment, just because we talked about this at length earlier in the week at the facilities meeting, and, and I appreciate Mr. Hertz being here again this evening. Is some of these items, you know, and especially as that hospital is coming to end a service life for some of the components there, is this price tag of $111,000, I think they're, in a 45-day timeline to get it done, we really need to be considering increasing the spending authorization either of the manager, so that these things can be done timely, and Providence can be reassured that the funding is going to come back to them. Because shutting down that hospital as a result of them not doing the work to go through the process of us authorizing the expense isn't an option. So, I have no problem approving this next week. But I do think it's, it, it, it still points out to a bigger issue of how do we address the, the needs in a more timely manner than going through a work session and then into a regular meeting?
I already have language working on with the attorney for that very suggestion to the assembly.
Thank you.
Jared?
Yeah, I'm going to support this, too. However, the, so we're being asked to approve a contract. The contract that's in the packet is between Fire Door Solutions and PKIMC.
So, I believe that that can be changed.
Okay.
I think that we are asking you to authorize, I didn't author this. Providence has already ordered this work. So, effectively, what you're doing is authorizing staff to pay them, and there is a mechanism within the lease that allows for that.
Okay.
Mr. Turner? Dave, I'm, Carl mentioned a process tonight during public comment. And I'm assuming he's had those discussions with you and the manager in terms of things that we could do to ensure that we take care of our building in a timely and productive manner. Is, are the things that he suggested under active discussion?
Absolutely, they have been for a while, not only with the local folks, but also Carl works with in real estate group out of Anchorage, who has a lot more to do with the facilities. We've been having these conversations with them as well. The material that I was referencing for, with the attorney writing what Mr. Smith has requested, is specifically for enterprise funds at this time. But I believe we need to look at the larger picture, but this is a good place to start. I think there's other procurement mechanisms that perhaps our code needs to be drug out of the past and into the future, but still has safeguards to make sure that the dollars that the public are generated by taxes from the public are indeed spent wisely.
Amy, just to follow up on that. So, how do we take this need that's been identified that you're working on and bring it to possible changes in ordinances in what we do? How do we get this so that we actually aren't here next year saying, we need to do this?
The lawyer opinion that we're seeking right now, and we've already actually gotten an answer back from Scott Brent Erickson, is how to raise the manager's authority, spending limit up to 150,000 inside of enterprise funds only, so that we can deal with emergencies at the hospital. That doesn't take away the manager's responsibility of informing the assembly of the purchases, but it does allow for faster movement in the purchases in emergent situations. So, in, he rightfully asked back, like, do you want that for everything? And we said, no, we just limited that to the 150 inside of the enterprise funds. But as we've discussed before, there's also been discussion of raising the manager's spending limit to 50,000 for other things, and that will also make procurement easier for things that, so that I could sign for stuff between 25 and 50,000. And I think that's been talked about several times, and that's, those are fairly simple code changes. And we, it would be even easier if we did them together. So, it would just take a, an introduction in a public hearing to do so.
Dave?
The other item that the attorney did mention was that there was an ordinance that reduced the signature authority of the manager. That ordinance could potentially just be reversed.
Okay. Can we sort of assume there's a consensus of the assembly that this should come up in sometime in the near future for action at some point? So, if we can pass that on to our mayor, that we want to see this at some point in the near future? Is that, are you able to facilitate that? Thank you. Mr. Turner, do you have another comment?
I do. I hope that this fix is going to keep us up to date. You know, we, we check our elevators every year, we check our fire sprinklers every year, we check, we should be checking these dampeners every year. And if we were catching these, I mean, we have 90 some odd, I don't, I don't have it on that page right now, but 90 some odd that are not working. If we had an annual review of these dampeners, we probably would be able to fix them underneath the budget amounts that we're talking about, that, that the manager has authority for. But we've let it go for so long without checking or, or bringing it up in smaller lots, that we're looking at $111,000 bill at this point, instead of maybe two of them went out, or five of them went out, instead of 98, I believe, is the number. So, that, I hope that we're learning our lesson on getting these things checked out. The weather around here, the, the sea spray that we get causes rust and causes these things not to function well. I know exactly, you know, things get old. I mean, there's reasons why they fail. I have no problem with replacing them. I just think that we should be hitting them when they're not functioning, not after a third of them go bad. So, I know that we've had COVID, and we've had other restrictions over the last couple of years, but we've known about these things for quite some time. And waiting until our hospitals, in 45 days to get their, their compliance into, into shape, it's, it's kind of too far. So, I hope that we're learning from this.
Well, Mr. Turner, I think you made an eloquent statement of what many assembly members have been saying for a long time. We can't ignore our major maintenance on $100 million worth of buildings, school buildings, the NOAA, the hospital. That if we don't take care of our buildings, then this is going to be a pattern. Peterson Elementary is a great example, and other areas, too. So, I hope that as we move forward, and I think it's a priority of everybody, that we really try to make sure that we have the money to take care of our buildings, because we can't afford these kind of bills in the long run. Mr. Smith?
If I could, just in response to Mr. Turner's comment, I, these, we were aware of these for several years now. And, and I, you know, there was a waiver granted, and then that waiver went, went away. But even with our awareness of them for several years, I, I don't think we were proactive either in saying we ought to like budgets of money to take care of some of these before it became that crisis level. And, and I think it just goes to that, you know, that, that saying of kicking the can down the road. It's like, how long can you kick it and live under a waiver before, before you're going to pay the bill? And, and I agree with you that it would have been nicer and easier to, to deal with, you know, $25,000 right now instead of 111,000. But I, I think that, you know, when we become aware of these things, then we need to start looking at it in a more proactive way of how are we going to take action on them at a more timely manner than we have.
Other comments? Thought I said Jared's hand raised earlier, but I guess I did.
Maybe it was just like a hallelujah kind of thing.
Oh, okay. I'll know what that means now. All righty. Dave, do you have any other comments you want to share, or Amy?
I'll, I'll wait till the next one.
All righty, thank you. All righty. I did, okay, I guess I didn't do this one. Contract number FY 2023-46, authorizing the manager to execute, did we just do this one? Fire and smoke damper repairs at the Kodak Fisheries Research Center with Remede I-8 DBA Fire Door Solutions. I imagine this is very similar.
This is similar, other than we will have to cut the contract. This is slightly contrary to our procurement rules, because we have a vendor that we have now utilized to do this inspection. You have a building that you, your primary lessee is federal government. I believe that this is a health and safety item, so it could be considered emergent, because this, too, is life safety within an occupied dwelling. It's not a hospital, but it's still life and safety. So, this is something that needs to be considered. We put it up because we took advantage, because I believe what I've heard over the last multiple months is that we should look at a way to do things with economy of scale. And this is the exact thing that I'm, we're putting before you, before you. And I hope that this is acceptable to you. These folks are in town. I would love to call them tomorrow and say that I am 85.5% sure that you guys will approve this next week, because they can get parts and pieces coming. We don't have a, we're, we're not shutting KFRC down, but we're going to look pretty foolish if we don't take advantage of this.
Thank you. Comments? Mr. Conrad, I have a question for you. All of our schools have HVAC systems, and they must have dampers, I suspect, also. You mentioned in your comments earlier, you had a conversation with the school district, and what is the status of dampers in all of our school buildings?
Mr. Hargraves and I had this conversation today, and I believe we're in the same position that we were on these smoke dampers in every building that the borough owns.
Tell me what you just said, because I'm taking a deep breath here, so.
Basically, to answer your question directly, is we need to inspect all the schools as well.
So, we could certainly be back here very soon, probably immediately, I'm suspecting, given the safety information you gave us about the hospital and NOAA building. So, I imagine we're going to hear back soon about this?
I believe you're correct. I also believe we have some other, we have another healthcare facility I think we need to consider looking at where we're at on this. So, yeah, rinse and repeat.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I heard Dave say he'd like some reassurance, and, and I'm, I'm going to support this next week, Dave. I can assure you of that, because I think it saves us money in the long run.
I certainly have heard that. Thank you very much, Dave. Well, that brings us to other items. We are fortunate to have the confirmation of some mayoral appointments to the Architectural Engineering Review Board of Mr. Cody Allen and Mr. Dan Rar. We'll be looking at that, and also the confirmation of a mayoral appointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee for the Borough of Mr. Travis Cooper and Ms. Tracy Chandler. And those will go before us. Any comments on any of those? I will tell you upfront, I'm hoping at some point in the future, we can have a meeting where we do not have to approve these. I really believe if the mayor or the manager has appointed these people to non, you know, to not the planning and zoning or the part of equalization, which are quasi-judicial, I think those are more formal. But some of these committees are advisory, and, and I think people get sort of tired of waiting for us to get around to approving them. And I'm just wondering why we, the Borough Assembly has to approve something when we almost always do, where the manager could easily evaluate these and sort of let us know maybe in the consent agenda or something like that. Just a thought in the future. We certainly heard input from a few public members that they got sort of discouraged waiting and not knowing. So, if we could alleviate some of the obstacles that people have to go through to serve their community, it might serve our goal of filling these committees better. So, all right, that brings us to managers' comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Assembly. You all have a copy of the Thank you. Good evening, Assembly. You all have a copy of the manager's report, so just going to go over a few highlights. As mentioned earlier, tonight, union negotiations are ongoing. We met with the union on Monday and Tuesday this week, and Ryan, the representative from IEBW, will be coming back on Monday, May 15th. We have all day on Monday and then half the day on Tuesday to work with them. For the borough, I have Dora Cross, Dave Conrad, Megan Christensen, and myself negotiating. And it's interesting to sit across from the table and negotiate with people you want to win. So it's a, it's an interesting position to be in because I think that's an important part of how we keep our employees. So learning a lot about that process, and everyone is doing a great job discussing their side's needs. So it's been a good process so far. In last week's compensation study, the report that I gave you said that we were two to three months out, and I was feeling discouraged by that because it seems like we've been waiting for so long for those results to come back. So I asked Megan to reach out and see if we get an update, and I actually included the email because it's just so good. The answer we got back from Gallagher, and that went from two to three months to two to three weeks. So it's definitely worthwhile asking because I think when they know you're getting anxious, you get a faster response. Other new things that are happening is that we are in the middle of the Bayside Fire Chief Recruitment. That period closed at the end of last week. We had two applicants, and we have started the review and rating of those applicants. And once that part is done, just like the manager process that you all have been through so much, we're going to start interviews with them. We do have a meeting with Senator Murkowski's staff about the start of looking at U.S. Coast Guard land. That's happening on Monday at 11:00 a.m. And because all of those people I just mentioned to you might be the ones I asked to go to that meeting, our assessor, SEMA, is going to go to that meeting for us on the borough's behalf and just see if there's anything that we need to take away from that. And then we, I guess, my office, I sent out a letter in support of the city to the Alaska Department of Transportation to support the city of Kodiak in their Mission Road pavement improvement project. So Sterling reached out and asked us to help with that, and I sent a letter to help with that. It was great. Taxual was certified this week. Very proud of SEMA and her staff for making it through after the retirements of so many people that used to help do it in the past. Planning and zoning had a meeting on Wednesday, just a work session, and that went well. And SEMA is finally going to get some time out of the office. She's going to be out of the office from the 18th to June 12th. Community development, I know we've talked about staffing a lot, and I think community development is one of those areas where the staffing is at its lowest. So we only have two out of the, depending on what point in history you look at community development, there has been either four or five people in that department. So there's only two people doing that work, plus the help from SEMA. We talked about U-Mot tonight, so happy that we're able to decide on a version, and we'll get that put on a future agenda. You know about the Parks and Rec, so that's great. Looking really quick on engineering facilities, two of you actually sit on the Health and Facilities Advisory Board, so it was great to meet with them and find out what their priorities are. We set the next meeting for July 10th at 3:00 p.m. We asked to do it after budget cycle, and they acquiesced, which was very nice. There are some numbers in there for how much we cleaned up, how much we brought in for community cleanup day. So pretty impressive that there's over 5,000 pounds of metal that made its way out of the community into the correct place. Yesterday, we met with Alaska Waste. Representatives were here in the building to go over contract and talk about words. It's amazing, the definition of words become very important when enforcing a contract. So we talked about service areas and what actual premise was. Late last week, Mr. Arntz, I should say Mayor Arntz, signed an affidavit stating what the borough's position was on the definition of service area to help Alaska Waste settle a case with a customer who's on their own system but claimed they had their own landfill and didn't have to pay. So just working out the definitions on that. Then there's talk about KFRC and remediate, which we just discussed in packet review. You're also going to see that the elevators around our schools and our hospital are going to be replaced or renewed as well. And very exciting, we had friends contractors in the building this morning for their pre-construction meeting to start the talks on getting materials here to start the Peterson project this summer. So that was exciting. I told you about my landfill tour. During that tour, we found that at the leachate treatment plant, you'll remember approving the found, the new building expansion. That foundation has been laid for a while, but now all those pieces and parts are out there to build the actual building, which will start next week. And the machinery is there. I don't know what it does, but Dave does, and so that's good. And so we're excited to get that closed in and put in the plant. And then the other thing I want to talk to you about was the touch tank. Jessica and the staff here have been very flexible in getting over there and getting that open for when cruise ships are in town. So they were all ready to do it on the 10th, and we pulled her back because the cruise ship canceled because of weather. But that is all going well. In finance and IT, I actually, it's pretty much the same stuff you saw in finance as last week, but we got some new information from IT. IT had a new PC tech start, and it's been a great addition to the team. And then when the new GIS analyst arrives in early June, that'll be the first time that department has been fully staffed in the last three years. So they're excited to be at that point. They're in the process of updating to Windows 11 through all the desktop computers here in the borough. And they're also making all of the email live in the cloud, so it's easier to get when you're not sitting at your desktop. They're also taking Incident Command training, the ICS training for cyber attacks, which is something that I think all boroughs are, and municipalities are starting to pay more attention to. And Dora is actually out of the office right now, will be back on the 18th. She plans on landing, weather permitting, on the 18th and being here for our regular meeting next week. Now Larry, in his closing comments, said, look at this list of pending items, and it hasn't changed, but it has changed this week a lot. And not because I just erased them, but to actually move them up into the stuff that we were doing. So you'll continue to see some changes on that and some updates in there. So it's really nice to work with Megan Christensen. She really does a lot of different things for us. And when I'm like, who does this? She knows. So she's a great asset, and she's helping me move the stuff around on the lists. And Dora maintains the list of leases, and so she, she knows who to talk to about every lease. And a lot of those are in progress, and it just is going to take someone to follow up with the people. Just like the Chinniac Library lease, Dave and I have a trip planned to go out to Chinniac and meet with those people. And we have a spreadsheet printed out on how much it costs to maintain that facility. And so it's great that we have the people that can give us the facts and figures and go out and deal with those facilities. I signed the utility bills for the Carluck School today, and I know that we have talked with Carluck in the past, and we have said that we were going to close that school. And they said, no, please don't close our school. And then we said, okay, we're going to give you to the end of the fiscal year. Well, as in Larry's example earlier tonight, with that coin swirling, that one is swirling really fast. And so we're going to do our best to reach out with them and let them know that that's still our plan. And try to, I don't want anyone to be surprised when we make those decisions, but there has been not a lot of movement on their side. Maybe they're listening, or someone will tell them. But we need to figure out how we're going to take care of those facilities and do something that's fiscally responsible for our taxpayers. And that's all I have. And I didn't read it all, but a lot. So is there any questions?
Mr. Smith?
As you mentioned, Carluck School, is there any update with regards to Larson Bay School and the transfer of that facility over to, I think it was the, the tribal council? Thank you.
Dave, you can add more information. The information that I got about that today was that they are already acting like it is theirs. So now it's just a matter of signing it and making sure that it actually becomes theirs.
We have a few items that need to be repaired that I made commitment to. This was not the best winter for travel in HVAC, so we're going to go down there, plan a trip, go down, spend a day or two, fix a few items, and get the paperwork signed.
Thank you.
Joe?
That was one of the things that I was going to talk about. The leadership, rural leadership forum happened a little bit earlier, and that was one of the questions that came up, was what was going to happen with that school. And I told them just what Dave said here, so they're aware. And I can't wait for you to get out there. I don't know that there was anybody from Carluck at the forum, but we try to pass, I try to pass that along as well. So I'm glad to see that's going along well. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. That was a great report. It's clerk's comment time.
Thank you. So I just wanted to comment about an appeal that we received from Mr. Cole that will be coming to the Board of Adjustment. That will be the Assembly. I believe there was an email sent to you guys earlier today regarding that. So just wanted to remind you about ex parte communication. So make sure you follow that. Also, I will be leaving on Saturday to go to training in Minneapolis, and Nova has already left. She'll be back on the 18th and will be at the meeting. I get back on the 18th, but I will not be at the meeting. So both Nova and I will be out. And if you guys have any questions or need help with anything, we, I'm hoping that my laptop is going to be working because it's not working today. But you guys can call or email us anytime. And Irene will be here, and she's, she's been great. So feel free to call the clerk's office, and she'll pass the message or get you the answers that you need.
Thank you very much. All right, Assembly member comments. Joe?
No comments. Thank you.
Jared?
Just a couple. One, Kodiak College graduation is tomorrow at the, at the auditorium, and that's always an exciting time. So congratulations to all the, all the graduates. And then my daughter was on the front page today. She's a KHS graduate, 2020, and she was awarded the UAF Undergraduate of the Year, and that's really cool. And her family is very proud of her. And Kodiak is very proud of her, too.
Mr. Smith?
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
So I'm going to correct myself on some of the statements that I made earlier when I said that it was the mill rate that doesn't change. It is the MAPTR limit, which is, which was in Dora's paper, 15,608,154, unless there's new construction. So no matter what the assessed value is, that number doesn't change unless there's new construction. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I stand corrected.
All right. Thank you. All righty. I just want to thank our great manager's report. I appreciate the meeting tonight and the prep. And I want to congratulate SEMA for all the work that her two departments have done to calculate the tax rolls and get us ready to move forward. So I do really appreciate that, and I'm sure you deserve your vacation wherever it is. So thank you. And Dave, I appreciate all the work that you've done. Filling in for the manager when you had a whole department to run that was short-staffed to begin with was exceptional. And I'm glad that you now have time to do, take care of your first love, which is buildings and taking care of engineering and facilities. I also want to point out that our landfill, formerly called the dump, people need to know how easy it is to go out there and dispose of. That crew is probably the nicest group of people you will ever meet, and they'll be there to help you dispose, throw away your stuff. You can even look into the pit and throw your bags in there. And I, if, I think if most of the public actually knew how easy it was to go out to the landfill and dispose of things rather than to throw a lot of stuff in the dumpster that can more easily be thrown away at the landfill, you'd see more people heading out there. But they do a great job. All right. I guess that ends our meeting tonight. Thank you very much. We'll see you next week.